I have a commitment to this city. We moved back here and my adult children also live here. I'd like to define who I see the stakeholders in this situation are. The board, the administration, the teachers, the parents, and the students. What I would like to see is all the stakeholders in this system work together for the good of all the students. I'd like to have open communication between all these stakeholders and bring everyone together as a team because I think that's the only way it can really work. I have a commitment to showing up and doing work. I have a commitment to listening, being the most important part of this job. And I'd like to learn and apply best practices in that role. I also have a commitment to providing the best possible environment for the diversity of learners that we have in the system. I think there's nothing more important than our children and I believe that these children are entitled to the best education possible.
All right, thank you so much, Linda. And now we're going to move over to Joe. And he's going to get his...
Well, yeah.
...his speech, sorry. No problem. Introduction.
Hi, my name is Joe Koschew. I am a lifelong Hamtramck resident. My family has been in the community for about 120 years now. I'm a board member at the Hamtramck Historical Museum. I've been there for a decade now. Been board president there for about five years. My duties include conducting meetings, raising issues, things along those lines. I think for me, when I see the district and things that have been happening, I think we could go in a lot better direction. I think there needs to be a lot more teamwork. We just, we really, we really need to, to really, oh, yeah, sorry, I'm blanking here, sorry. But we really need to get it together. Our kids are suffering because of the problems that are going on in the district. We're losing phenomenal teachers, some that I know personally who have left the district. And we really, really need to get this district down the right path. I mean, Hamtramck has a very, very great history when it comes to students. And the Hamtramck School Code, which was written by Morrie's Keyworth, really brought attention to the daily lives of the students and the health of the students. And the school code was actually adopted by all districts in the country. So I just think we really, really need to get, oh, yeah, we really need to get it on the right path and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Joe. And now our last candidate, Bill Garbach.
Me too. Born and raised here. Born in, just on the Norwalk Street over there, right by Dickson East. Went to high school here. Went to college in Detroit at Wayne State. Part of a city and a school district that brought a lot of great things to my life. So I'm looking to really give back any of that. My family's been involved in the schools for a very long time as well. My great grandpa, great uncle, I believe, was superintendent. Grandmother was on the school board. Grandfather worked in the schools. My ex-wife, great relationship still, teaches at Dickson East. So just excited to be here. Again, the diversity and the greatness of these schools is being overshadowed by some of the things that aren't happening correctly. I was, my graduating class was 1997, 140 kids and we had 26 different nationalities. It just brought so much to my life. I'm not afraid to go up to anybody on the street, have a conversation, you know? And again, it starts with the students, starts with the parents, educators, administration, being on the same board, talking about the same opportunities and being on the same page, creating a safe and healthy learning experience for the kids. I was, I was part of the class that, or part of years of school where the first metal detectors were introduced in the schools, right? One of my classmates was shot. She survived luckily, but you know, it created a safer environment for us. And it was part of the board, it was part of the teaching and part of the administration that made that kind of stuff happen, to make us feel safe and secure. So again, I really think focus on the students, giving the teachers what they need to teach the right lessons and do what they need to do, and the administration is what they need as well. And that's really what I'm hoping to do. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna stand over here, but if there's anybody in the audience who has a question, if you could come, come up and ask your question, otherwise I have a few questions for the candidates.
I got a question.
Okay, you, okay, now Ms. Porter, you don't need your microphone. That I do now.
Hi, hi everybody. My name's Madeline Porter. And I've been in this school, I know you, I know you. I want to know you. My question, you know, I've been watching the demographics and the element and the climate of the board, of the administration, of the city government. I watch it all change, I watch it explode, I've watched it all through it. I, I, I have kept throwing in the arts because I feel as an artist that education through the arts and cultural awareness through the arts and idiocy through the arts are what we need in this community to bring all the races, all the cultures, everyone together. And I want to know how you stand, what you feel about arts in the schools, education through the arts. I think I do the Martin Luther King Breakfast, I'm the president of the Concerned Women of Hamtramck. And I'm looking to build that community as well. And I would love to have teachers involved and administrators and staff involved in the concerned women because that means that, you know, women pay the rules. But that does not exclude it from having men involved as well, just so you know. So I want to know where you stand, each and every one of you, where you stand on education through the arts because I would like to implement some more programming, education through the arts in the school district. I work with Linda Ann. I am the connectivity and engagement manager at Detroit Public Theater. We have a show coming up this season called Salt Turnip, which I think will directly, it directly affects school staff, administrators, students, parents, because it deals with the school shootings in a really interesting way because a young girl deals with her trauma. Who's stuffed animals? And the stuffed animals are the adults, our adults. And so it's a wonderful piece that I think should be implemented, you know, that I think it would behoove teachers and staff and we have a partnership with schools. And I would love to partner with Hamtramck Public School in some kind of way because we partnered with Cody Renaissance Cass DSA in bringing the school groups in for pre-show lessons and, you know, social workers and that kind of thing to deal with trauma. And Detroit 67 as well is another play that we deal with. So where do you stand on education through the arts? That's a lot.
Why didn't you run for school?
That's a lot. You should have run for school. I was gonna run, oh! That, you know, I should be sitting up there, I could ask to run for school board. And I go, "Watch out, it's Madeline, she's coming."
I don't believe that arts are an extra. I think they're essential. I also think that there's a connection between art and STEM. When you're using both sides of your brain, then you're, you're better educated. I also think that it's also a great tool for kids to be able to communicate when they can't verbally communicate things.
I second what Linda said, actually. As an artist myself, I think it's super important for, for kids to be able to express themselves, whether it be through, through music or filmmaking or painting. I think it's a super important part of a child's development. And I think that it definitely needs to be propped up a bit more. And, yeah, that's, that's what I think.
Thank you.
So since I get to go last, I couldn't agree more. But I think the well-rounded education is what's essential, right? I was an athlete in school, football, baseball, basketball. I got to play baseball in college, to Wayne State, but I was also in the band. From what I understand, it's not a band anymore. Is there a marching band, everything?
Oh, no.
Yeah, so I was marching, concert band. But it taught you more discipline, it taught you a couple other things, right, that you don't necessarily get. I took a dance class in college and it was probably the best baseball season of my life, to be honest, because of the stuff that you teach and the balance it teaches you, things like that. So I think it's important to have arts and education as well.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions? Yes. Oh, yes, right here, and then I'll go you.
Okay.
Okay, so do you need me to bring the mic to you?
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, I was just trying to say, I know we have like two board members that have not been showing up at all. And we also have a superintendent who's been taking a medical leave and just leaves. And she's, has been out like practically six months out of the, out of the first year or the second year. And she's getting paid like $200,000 a year. And I was, and I, I know that she has lawsuits filed. Oh, they have an interim superintendent and they're paying him also. And then she's suing the city, so they have all these legal fees. And I was wondering, what, is there anything that can be done about this? It seems to me like the board should be responsible for this. I mean, how can we get rid of them?
If I want to try that one? Thank you for your question.
Legally, I don't know an answer to that. But I'd say if I do get chosen for the board, we gotta figure out what's going to the right place.
Oh, I can't hear you.
Oh, can you hear me now? Can you hear me louder?
Well, yeah, make the damn louder, yeah.
You talk a little louder?
Yeah.
I would say legally, like I said, I don't know what the, all the legal ramifications are, I don't know. I know there is lawsuit, I don't know what is and else of it. But if I do get chosen to be on the board, it's about making the right decisions for the district, right? And most of those meetings, I think, are held closed doors, right, so we don't get to see them. But, you know, it's about working together and making the right choices, great choices. $200,000, we can go to a lot of great things for this situation.
Oh, by the way, you know what they did? They also, they extended her contract and they raised her salary to $225,000 a year.
Yeah, so I think, again, that's...
That's what the board did.
Yeah, that's decisions that, again, I don't think this board has made a lot of the right decisions in the past few years, even for themselves. So, and I think that's a reason, I think that's a reason why two of them don't show up anymore, right? So I think if we start making the right decisions, get the right people in play, some of those things will change.
If I remember correctly, I think the lawsuit was settled recently. I'm not 100% sure.
Just the one, it's the...
Okay, I can see, okay. Yeah, I mean, losing $200,000 a year, that definitely has to be dealt with. I don't, I don't know legally how that can be dealt with either. I do think bringing her back and extending her contract was a bad decision, in my own personal opinion. As for board attendance, I think there should be a policy. If you're not, if you're not, if you're not coming to meetings, and I mean, from the meetings I've been to, I had, there were three board members that don't show up.
At least two.
At least two. I know one, one who was no longer running for seat, but I do, I think there needs to be policy. If you miss four or five meetings, or three meetings, whatever number the, this decided on, I think, you know, there should be a special election or something to, to bring board members on that actually want to help out. Because right now, it's not, it's not doing anything. I mean, having, having four board members when you should have seven, it's, it's not working.
Yeah. I can't disagree with any of that. And I'll just say, you bring up a very important point, but here's the thing, we have to vote. You have to vote. That's why we're here. And we're showing you the candidates that are here. There's about six or seven that are running. They're not here, okay? So, so, so what you gotta remember is, we can talk about it, but you gotta be about it. That means you have to go vote, okay? All right, anybody else? Oh, Rosemary, sorry, I forgot.
Hi, I'm Rosemary, eighth grade, B C D, I've been here 31 years. I think that...
Louder please, Rosemary.
Okay. I'll come up here.
Okay.
I'll come up here.
You want me to use the mic?
First lady voice. Sure. Not a pretty... I think the one thing that's been really discouraging for me when I talk to the board is that I feel like I'm talking to a wall. And I, I stand up there, I stood up there and I've cried and I spill out my guts and I never ever, I don't know if anybody's ever heard any responses to that, I never hear a response back. And so my question of you would be, I would hope that that policy would change, that like when I'm giving my heart and soul, I would like to know that like the next board meeting you guys have discussed, this is a discussion, this is a concern, hey, he brought up, let's address this at the next meeting. How do you feel about that?
Okay, while we're at it, though, we should just go to the last one.
I, I think that that's incredibly valid. I think part of the reason that I put my name in to run was because I can't understand the lack of response, responsiveness that this particular board has to the students, to the teachers, to administration. I just, I, I can't get wrapped around not even showing up for meetings. So I think that that's a valid concern and I would definitely do that differently.
Yeah, I think the board is here to serve the students and serve you guys. So if we're not listening to what you guys are saying, what's the point of being here? Secondly, I told you guys, my ex-wife is a teacher, if I'm not listening to her, I'm still trying to keep her happy, so. But no, I mean, we're here ultimately here to make sure we give you guys the tools you need to have, to help reduce successful members of society, so that's why we're here.
Thank you.
Well, you know, I think communication is key. If we're not communicating amongst each other, as someone who asked a question and hasn't had an answer yet, it's, it's discouraging. I feel if, if we don't know what's going on, how can we fix things, you know? They don't tell us what's going on. Me personally, I feel if I, if I am elected, I would like to see a monthly report of, of what's going on in the district, you know? I'd like to see teacher, teachers come with questions and, I mean, we're a team, you know? I think that's essentially what we are. And if, if we're not communicating, if we're not together, then the whole district fails. Yeah, I just, I, I don't understand how they don't answer questions. I mean, I've, I've spoken to, to a couple people, a couple parents who, who were frustrated with the same thing. And I, I just said, you know, yeah, that's what I'd like to do if I do get elected is, is be able to communicate with people, talk with people. Yeah, that's super important.
All right, thank you. Okay, I got one right here.
How would you work with teachers and administrators to support LGBTQ students?
Can you repeat the question again?
As a board member, how would you work with teachers and administrators to support LGBTQ students in Hamtramck schools?
Okay, well, I think first and foremost, making sure they're safe and, and the fact that if they're coming to class and they're not feeling safe, you know, that's, that's obviously not a good thing. I would also want students to come to the board with, with concerns and questions and it, you know, I, I feel like what we're in right now, they don't feel comfortable coming, coming to anybody except maybe teachers with, with questions or concerns, you know? So for me, I, I would be open to, to conversations with, with parents. I mean, I don't know if, if it would be, you know, out of bounds, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind answering questions personally or students or parents coming with concerns, you know? I think, I think if they're not safe, if they're not happy, if they don't feel like they belong here, then we're not doing something right.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? I think everybody needs to be met in the places they need to be met and that we can't dictate to everyone what's important and/or how they want to be communicated with. I also think that everyone needs to be seen for who they are and that that's incredibly validating and it's really important. And that it has to be an open communication situation and we have to take everyone's value as they are. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we gotta start with the students, right? Get their input, parents, teachers, administration, get everybody's input into create policies to create that safe environment. If there's not a safe environment in the schools for everybody involved, it's not going to be a great learning experience. And our ultimate goal is to teach these kids how to live on a life. So creating policies to make everybody feel safe and be safe is definitely something the school board should be taking care of.
All right, we got time for two more, so we got Christina. Oh, we got one, two, three, and then we're gonna wrap it up, okay? All right, sorry, Ms. Kudus.
So I'm just gonna put you back on this high key. I'm sorry, I think, sorry, Rosemary. In regards to the school board not responding, we present our situation. They don't even email or even come to talk to us personally. They don't even come through the schools to talk to teachers to say, "Hey, how's it going? Did you have everything you need?" How, you know, there's no interaction. As a matter of fact, this morning was our welcome breakfast. There was not one single school board member to welcome us back to school. There has always been, prior years, this is the first breakfast in, I don't know how many, four or five years, this is the first breakfast, but prior to that, there would always be at least one to two, and they would walk around and say hello. Not one single person was there today. And that's very disheartening because honestly, we give our blood, sweat and tears to pour these kids. And not to be even thanked or welcomed is very disheartening. So what would you do? I'm sorry, I got lost in my thoughts. What would you do?
So I have a question that's directly related to that. So do you have a vision for board accountability? How would you help measure and track progress towards community buy-in, but really towards the success of a board? Like, do you have a vision for what a good board looks like? And how would you contribute to creating that vision, like implementing that vision in a way that's measurable and practical?
Okay, well, first and foremost, I think when it, when it comes to the relationship between the teachers and the school district, me personally, I would love to visit the schools at least once a month, if not more, and, and talk with teachers, make sure they have what they need and everything that you mentioned. I think if, again, it's, it's communication. I, I know of only one board member I talked to at the, at the fun fair last week. I spoke to administrators from all the different schools and they said only one board member actually shows up to the different schools and talks to people, that's unacceptable. I think if you're gonna be on the board, you should be communicating, you should be making sure the teachers have what they need, that the students have what they need. First and foremost, actually, the students have what they need because if, if they're not, if they don't have what they need, then everything goes out the window. My vision, I, I would really like to be able to have community discussions and community groups to come in and make sure that, that they are, I'm trying to put this, that we have everybody from the community involved, that their concerns are being met, whether it be a teacher from the community, whether it be a parent or students coming with concerns. I think if we have, if we have committees or a committee that could, that could answer questions or come in with concerns, I think that's, that's a way of, of, of really gathering what the community wants and needs.
I, I think it's a big part of the board's responsibility to be visible and to be out in the community, not just with parents, but with educators and to see what's actually happening in the schools. And as far as accountability, I think that the board has to police itself and they have to put some rules in place that people do have to show up and they do have to be responsive in a certain way. And I think that's just lacking right now, that we just don't have it. And I, I think it's insulting to the students and the teachers that someone wouldn't show up. Because how can you hear someone's concern? I think that's the biggest thing is listening, listening and hearing what people have to say. I think that's the number one responsibility that a board member would have.
So in my day job, I manage a sales team. And one of the books I remember is servant leadership, right? I'm here to serve you, I'm here to serve the students. And how am I not gonna do that if I'm not asking you questions or listening to you and figuring out what you need to do with your job every day? I would, you know, I'm not saying the district's not proud, but I mean, this, people need to be proud to live here, work here, do the right things. And I'm not seeing that as much anymore, you know? Like I said, I talked about my graduating class, we had a kid who went to Harvard for my graduating class. We had Michigan, Michigan State, I went to Wayne State, they played sports, we had a lot of guys that played sports. If we're giving people the right things to succeed, we can make that happen, right, for anybody, right? So, and again, it involves accountability on all sides, not just the board. A big part of the board should be, needs to be accountable, but teachers, parents, students, everybody needs to be accountable to bring this district back to where it should be.
Thank you. Okay, final question, Max.
What's your position on the board stipend?
Okay. We are, we're, how much is it?
It's $6,000.
Right. It's seven.
Is it seven for the president?
Yes, $7,000 for the president. So the president gets seven. Okay, just in case you didn't know. Okay, now you may.
Personally, I could not believe the raise that they gave themselves. I think that that was just unbelievable. And personally, I don't see the stipend as being part of the job. So that's my personal viewpoint.
Yeah, I would, I would second a lot of that. I would probably donate my back to something within the community, so.
Or vote it back out, sorry. No, you're good, you're good. I pretty much agree with everything there. I, I think it's, it's ridiculous that they're pretty much taking money away from students and from the district itself. Me personally, I would donate it back to the district, to some sort of program or, you know, wherever, wherever it would, it would do best. I mean, maybe for, I do know, me personally, I work with, with students on a program called History Day from the Hamtramck Historical Museum. We had a problem last year getting some students up to Central Michigan for, for the state program. So if my money could help going towards something like that, I'm not concerned about the money. I don't, I don't think the money matters. When it comes to the students and the district as a whole, I don't, I don't understand the pay rates, to be honest with you.
Okay, there's a lot of confusion on that one, so, no problem. Okay, there's a lot of confusion on that, so, no problem. All right, that's gonna wrap it up for our first official candidate forum. Thank you, thank you all for coming. Again, if you are a registered voter, especially in Hamtramck, please do your part, get your friends, get your families to come out and vote. And also, if you did not sign in, please sign in at the back there. The candidates will be around for you to have conversations with briefly, and, yes.
There is something here, there's a millage on the ballot in November, and there's information here for presidents to commit to support this millage, it's over $2 million that the district needs every year.
Okay, thank you. So again, the candidates will be around for another 10, 15 minutes to circulate. If you would like to talk to them, they'll be available, and we'll go from there, we will decide which candidates will be supported by the union. But again, everybody gets to vote, okay? Everybody in the Hamtramck election, so please make sure that you get out, get your family, get your friends out to vote, yes?
I want to make an announcement. There had been a lawsuit against the teachers' union by the superintendent, Mrs. Ahmed, and there is a lawsuit against the school district as well. I have an email from the union counsel, union legal counsel, that says, so this document is now public. I'm pleased to forward the decision of the district court dismissing the claims against the Board of Education and individual members.
Oh. Yes, Ms. Porter.
Yeah, can I just say, for anybody, I have our season here, and there are student rates for, you know, if you're interested, the history departments, the social studies departments, the arts, the, we have Fat Ham, which is an adaptation Shakespeare and In the Hood, and so some wonderful programming that I think would behoove the district to take a look at. And the teachers, I'm looking to bring the teachers together for a teachers' night at the theater, so I have a group experience situation going on here, and all my info is on here, I'm gonna pass it out, so I'm gonna give them, should I give them, yes, and I have dates here, and here's tomorrow. So, and you can always get in touch with me, I'm always somewhere around, I'll be probably subbing here and there.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Porter.
Oh, special ed, special ed department, please, I have a special thing that I really want to work with, the special education department with, so I will be reaching out, yes, through the arts programming.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, and again, our candidates will be circulating for a few minutes afterwards, so if you can definitely, thank you for coming.